I think I'll just take a little um detour with Stuart here. I just want to welcome officially Bonnie Anderson, who was recently sworn in as the HDC representative to uh and HDC representative and a resident of the HDC. Sworn in recently. Maybe Bonnie, if you could just take a minute and just tell a little bit about you so we get to know you a little bit better. And hopefully by then Leo will be logged in.
Thanks, Rick. It's not a Zoom meeting without some technical difficulties, I guess. So um. So thank you. I'm so thrilled to be here and meet each of you. Some of you I know just through the community and some I'm meeting for the first time. I'm Bonnie Anderson. As Rick said, I live at 176 Main Street and have since August 2019. I'm from Beverly. My grandmother was born on Cherry Street and I have always just had a great love of ancestry, local history. Oh, well, like stories that she would tell me. Um, we grew up and I grew up in Rowl Side in Beverly. As she was a few streets away from me and she was a very active grandmother. Um, she had several grandchildren that lived in the area in our little neighborhood in Rowl Side. And no matter what, no matter where we were going, she would find a reason to drive on North and 1A and go down Cherry Street West and point out the house she was born in. We could be going to Cherry Hill Farm or to the mall and she would find a way to go. So I've just um Wenham has always been in my heart. I moved uh to California right after college and lived there for 14 years. I met my husband there. We had got married, uh got a dog, had two children and moved back here. Thankfully, we're so lucky to have found this home. Um, and I just have loved immersing myself in local hi- history even more so. Um, of the people who've lived in my home, of my grandmother, all of my family members and our and our town. Um, so thank you for welcoming me. I'm excited to be here. And uh, I mean, I love architecture and like historic preservation. It's not just all about the people. Um, but nice to meet each of you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Yes, welcome. Uh, we just lost Trudy too, so I don't know what's going on with her, but I think.
I'm here.
Hi, Trudy. Uh Janet. Um, so but I think Stuart, I in in the interest of time, I will try to deal with Leo's technical support issues here on the side if he calls me back. Let me just see what Janet's up to, but I think you probably want to proceed. Uh, and we'll have to first move people in after.
Rick, can you just announce the time when you adjourn, when you open the meeting, please?
Yes, uh, we called to order at six thirty four.
Thank you.
This afternoon, this evening. Uh, it's a meeting of the CPA Committee, the Town of Wenham. And we are meeting via Zoom. Uh, this meeting is being recorded. Thank you. Stuart, it's all yours.
No problem. I just uh get the presentation so you can see it larger. Fortunately, this menu is on top of where I want to click. Second. All right. How does that look to folks?
Beautiful.
That looks good. All right. Excellent.
Can I just, can I, oh, one piece of housekeeping?
Yeah.
Did we mute ourselves until the question and answer period or until you have a question? Unmute yourself. And I think Stuart will take questions as you go, right?
Yeah, I'd like to take questions along the way. I find it works better that way.
Yeah, great. So if we could just uh be sensitive to that and uh mute ourselves until it's time.
Maybe just a
and I gotta unmute Stuart. Uh. And hold on.
How did I get muted?
I just, you're okay, Stuart. You're back on.
No problem. I'm gonna use the little yellow raise your hand sign. I'm happy to answer questions along the way. I do find it works really well that way. And maybe Rick, you'll help me. Um, if I can't see everybody, if someone raises their hand, it's all right.
I will.
Folks have a question. Um, so I know Bonnie is brand new. Um, but have the rest of you been on the CPC for more than, let's say, a couple of years? Or do we have some other fairly new folks too, Rick?
I'm also new this year.
Okay, great. All right. So definitely.
Patricia's been here for a few months and I'm about eight, nine months in.
Okay, all right. So fairly, fairly new group. I know Leo's been on the longest tenured on the committee, right? I think every presentation I've ever done in Wenham, going all the way back to when I joined the Coalition in 2007, Leo's, Leo's been there, so. Uh, so tonight I just wanted to give you um at Rick's invitation, uh, a little update on what's happening with CPA. Um, and then some of the um basic training things that are the most complicated part of CPA that we always take a chance to review. Every time we're talking to folks. We love to talk about allowable uses and and some of the do's and don'ts and some of the best practices. Uh, this is not a our full two-hour training session that we deal with every new community. It's much shorter than that. Um, but we stole some of the good elements from that to really make sure that you have a good background on CPA. Um, as Rick said, my name is Stuart Sagan, or I'm the Executive Director of an organization called the Community Preservation Coalition. Uh, we're a nonprofit based in Boston, but we're really just a combobulation of all these other nonprofits you see on the screen. Um, these organizations in all the different areas of CPA um helped get CPA passed at the state level from 1990 to 2000. They advocated for it. And then when it passed and Governor Salucci signed it into law in September of uh 2000, uh, these folks all kicked in some money and started the Coalition. Um, and they still, um, each of these, each of these organizations still has a member on our steering committee. We have 21 folks who guide the operation of the Coalition on our steering committee. Eight of them are from uh local CPCs, just like yourself, representatives from uh local committees and then uh some at-large members as well. We are inside the offices of the Trust for Public Land. They've been our nice host for twenty-some-odd years. Before that, we were at Preservation Massachusetts. So we've been passed a little bit of around uh between the Coalition partners in in terms of office space. And the things we do are typical of a municipal trade association. You know, every one of you um has a trade association that represents the interests of the committee you are appointed from. So conservation person, I think Leo's the conservation person, right? Um, MACC, the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions would be a similar organization to ours. Um, there's a moderators' association. There's a lawyers' association. Every uh planning, you know, everyone has um um uh of an organization like ours. And the things we do um are technical assistance. That's probably what we're known best for. Um, we handle about 4,000 calls and emails every year. And if you ever have a question on CPA, it's not just reserved for the chair or municipal staff. It's anyone in the community that has a question on CPA. We are happy to answer it. Hopefully you've all seen our website. I'm gonna show you a quick page on there that's really um geared toward you folks in a minute. Uh, and I think you're all on our email list as well. We sent out another issue of our newsletter this week, as a matter of fact. I think probably our most valuable service, honestly, is the advocacy we do on your behalf up on Beacon Hill. Um, every year there are about uh two dozen bills that are filed to make changes to CPA and none of them would benefit you. Um, so that's a kind of a quiet behind-the-scenes work that we have to do to make sure the legislature understands why these different pieces of legislation might not be appropriate for CPA. But then also to advocate for things that communities want in the program. There's been 11 amendments to CPA since 2000. Um, our coalition has been involved in every single one of those to make it more useful for communities. Uh, so that's a work that you wouldn't necessarily do on your own as a community and why it's really good for a trade association like ours to exist. Um, to represent the interests of now 195 uh cities or towns. Um, we help new communities that are adopting CPA. We helped Pepperell last year and I just went out on uh Monday night and trained their uh uh new uh community preservation committee, uh also trained a brand-new community Hope Dale last week as well. Uh, and then all sorts of workshops, trainings, webinars, things like this. Um, we support ourselves the way most nonprofits would do. You know, we apply to foundations, those six partner organizations kick in both in-kind and financially. But the main source of our revenue comes from dues that are paid by community preservation committees out of um administrative funds that um are allocated uh as part of the program. And it is not a mandatory thing. It's obviously very voluntary, whether you support us or not and join as a member. We're really very grateful that 99.9% of all CPA communities have joined the Coalition and see the value in it. Um, and we appreciate your your support. Without it, we we would not be able to exist. Um, one thing that I will tell you about this presentation, you you'll see these bookmarks down in the corner. See the number one and a little uh teal triangle there. Um, when I send you a copy of the presentation tomorrow morning, um, I will send you a series of links. And those links correspond to more information on this particular slide. So if there's something on this particular slide you wanted to learn more about, there'll be a link in my email tomorrow for the number uh for bookmark number one, where you can go find more information uh on that particular topic. So here's our website. Hopefully you've all been there, um, communitypreservation.org. But there is a place on there that is really all for community preservation committees. It's really your your section of the website. Um, and it's if you click on the technical assistance tab at the top, um, this large menu opens up and there are literally hundreds of different articles on this website um about every little nuanced aspect of CPA. So if you're the historic person and you want to learn a little bit more about what other communities are doing with historic preservation, what things are allowed and what aren't, best practices, um, you know, click on the historic section for for you, for example. Um, this website looks very neat and and tidy and and doesn't look like it's that large, but behind the scenes, there are literally, like I said, hundreds of articles. Pretty, pretty, it's pretty well organized. You can usually find what you're looking for. I don't think we've ever taken anything off this website. We just keep building and adding to it. Our Communications Director Chase Mack spends a ton of time on this website um every day, making it more useful for folks and adding examples and navigations and and lots of data to that databank feature. Just to the left of technical assistance, we really pieced that up over the past couple of years. You can now see statewide reports drilling down um every little aspect of the CPA program in the in the databank. Um, CPA has become a really big deal in Massachusetts. I don't think any of us really thought uh 20 years ago or 23 years ago that it would become that large a program because it involves voting yourselves a tax increase and who wants to do that? But yet 195 cities, more than half of the cities and towns in the state have done that. And because cities have um been a little late to the party, but the last decade or so, cities have really come into the program um and 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 march. Um, and uh uh probably have probably 80% of the cities in Massachusetts now. So that's led to a kind of a boom of people in Massachusetts that live in a CPA community. Now, um, you know, almost three-quarters of folks who live in Massachusetts reside in the CPA community. Um, I love that statistic down the bottom. I don't know if we'll be able to say that forever, but so far, 23 years into the program, not one community has ever revoked CPA. Uh, it's pretty clear that once a community adopts it, they find it very useful um and and a and a good program uh for quality of life in their community. It's only even been made it to the ballot three times to been to be revoked in uh North Hampton, Hingham and Sturbridge, and all three were defeated overwhelmingly by the folks who said, yes, please continue to tax us. We think this this program is pretty is pretty helpful. So we're really proud of that statistic. So this is the map of of CPA communities in the state, and you can see um the towns are labeled in green and those cities I talked about are in orange or yellow, depending upon how your screen is projecting. And I find that that varies from a dark brown to a bright yellow, that color, when I see it projected. Uh, and our little neck of the woods up here, by the way, I'm from right next door to you folks. I'm from Boxford, so I'm not far away tonight. Um, I was actually disappointed when I found out this was a Zoom meeting. Usually I'm traveling all over the state. Um, and I was like, wow, this is great. I'm gonna get to go to Wenham uh right down the road. And then Rick said, well, actually, we're gonna do that one by Zoom. So I instead I drove to Hope Dale and Pepperell uh over the past week. Uh, but you know, our little corner has um not too many new CPA communities. We've had a pretty veteran group up there, you know, of all the cities and towns around us that have CPA in Essex County. Uh, but it has grown pretty fast um in the central part of the state, uh which is still pretty white, but it's really been filling around around the edges. Uh, the Berkshires is is still pretty slow for CPA communities. A lot of those communities are very, very small and wouldn't generate um really much money with CPA to do a lot of things. Plus, the CPA is run on volunteers, as you know. It's the nine-member or seven-member, depending upon the community CPA committee that makes things happen. And some of these communities out there, it's the same seven people volunteer on every committee and run the town. It'd be very difficult um to find enough folks to serve on the committee. Um, any way you look at CPA, it's been a huge success. Um, these um, the data you're on the screen right now is just about to be updated. Um, Chase, our Communication Director, is working on that right now. Um, once a year, we get a new data dump of the most recent projects from the Department of Revenue and we upload those to our website and comb through those and categorize them and um fix errors and that sort of thing. And that'll be displayed probably within a week or two on our website. Uh, and you'll you'll see that in your next newsletter, um, when we announce all the new projects that have been uploaded to the database. Uh, there's 15,000 different projects now, um, as of the end of FY22. So I'm guessing it'll be close to 17,000. It's usually somewhere between 1,500 to 2,000 projects every single year that are approved in all the CPA communities. And probably the most surprising stat on this page is how much money CPA has raised. We're up over $3 billion for just these four restricted categories: open space, historic preservation, uh affordable housing and recreation. So it's pretty incredible. Um, when you think about $3 billion, just 23 years, has been raised for these projects. Historic preservation, um, uh you'll be happy to know Bonnie is the is the largest category of CPA in terms of number of projects, the most popular. Projects tend to be a little smaller, so it's not the number one category money-wise, but actually the money rolls up pretty evenly among these four categories if you look at it statewide. Uh, we're up over 35,000 acres of open space with the new data that's coming in. Um, outdoor recreation is clearly the fastest-growing category of CPA by far. Um, up until 2012, you could not fix up any of your existing parks, playgrounds or athletic fields with CPA funding. The law didn't allow that. You could build new parks and playgrounds and athletic fields or buy land for new ones, but you couldn't fix up the ones you had. That didn't make a lot of sense to most of us. Um, most communities have, you know, plenty of um of of assets and just not any money in the general fund to to really take care of these um fields and and parks and playgrounds. Uh, so we worked for five years with the legislature to make an amendment to the law and we were finally successful in 2012. And now you can rehabilitate your parks, playgrounds and athletic fields. And it doesn't matter if you had previously bought them with CPA funds or not. They're all eligible. And so we've seen an explosion uh of projects in that category, real pent-up demand for rehabilitation of parkland in Massachusetts. Affordable housing is clearly the most challenging category of CPA. Um, it's housing expenses. As you know, in in Wenham, it is highly politically charged. Um, and it's, you know, subject to a lot of um of folks who don't want affordable housing, you know, in any vicinity near them. So it's a hard thing to do. Um, and it takes forever and it's highly regulated. So um it's a tough category, but we're very lucky that over 26,000 units have been created or supported with CPA so far. So I always uh kick off with the money because that seems to be what folks are most interested in. Um, and there are two revenue sources um for CPA, two primary ones. Um, the first is what we call your local surcharge revenue. So that's your property tax surcharge. In Wenham's case, it's 3%. Is that right, Rick? I got that right. You have a 3% surcharge. You're one of about 70 communities in the state that have 3%. Um, a lot of the early communities that adopted way back when you did, adopted with 3%, we've only seen two or three 3% new communities in CPA in the last decade. It's really a relic from times gone by. Um, but with things being so expensive now and property taxes having gone up, a 3% surcharge is really out of out of reach for almost everyone who's new coming into the program. So you and my town too are very lucky to have a 3% uh property tax surcharge that the voters authorized back when we passed CPA. Um, so that's the primary funding source. And then if you levy that local property tax surcharge, the program guarantees new annual distributions from the state trust fund. It doesn't guarantee the amount. Uh, there'll always be something. Um, uh, and that's a terrific funding source. Uh, you know, we have um uh a funding source that almost any other constituency in Massachusetts would love to have. Um, a a a true trust fund that is not subject to appropriation by the legislature. Um, money is collected and it, the only thing that can be done with it is to be paid out as a match to all the CPA communities every November 15th. Yeah, Rick.
I did want to mention that uh I did find a program, Stuart, and maybe you can talk about it. Uh, uh, an ability for seniors or to uh have their surcharge lowered or removed. Um, I'm just learning a little bit about it now.
Um, sure.
Um, we do have a, we do have a large senior population and taxes for them is is very stressful.
Yep. And um and CPA realized that, the enabling legislation. So allowed allowed communities to adopt a low-income and low or moderate-income senior exemption. And I'm assuming Wenham has that. Um, not every community adopted that exemption, but most did. And um, that means.
I'll be checking that, Stuart. I'll be checking that because I don't see applications coming across our desk in the past.
It would come to you. They would go to the assessor's office uh automatically. The same way, it's the same type of form that a regular tax abatement form is.
Okay.
Usually in January, when the actual tax bills go out, every January, um, you know, the first two bills of the year are estimated. The actual tax bill is the January bill. And that one usually has a notice that the town will be accepting applications for, you know, abatements if you feel your property taxes are unfair um or things have changed in in your home. Um, or if you want to take advantage of the CPA um low or moderate income um senior exemption. So the way, the way that works is um you do have to apply annually. So there is an application that your town has available at the assessor's office. Uh, and folks submit that application. If they are a low-income family, there are, there's a chart that shows certain thresholds depending upon their household size. Um, and if they meet the criteria, the there will be automatically qualified and a CPA surcharge will be waived. Um, if you are a low-income or a moderate-income senior, so seniors can earn a little bit more um and still qualify uh for that exemption, you can also fill out the application every year uh if you are a low or moderate-income senior. So, you know, typically, the CPA surcharge is not high enough for folks to take the time to do that, honestly. And you do have to turn in your tax return. It is like a three- or four-page form. So the state doesn't make it easy. It it unfortunately, they mandate how how communities accept these applications for uh the exemptions. Uh, but in in Wenham's case, I'm gonna guess with your high property values and a 3% surcharge, that your average household bill is $200 or $300. Um, I know it is in my town, in Boxford. It's um, it's between $200 and $300 a year, so it's not insignificant at all. Um, you know, 3% communities that have high property values like like Boxford or Wenham or Hamilton are gonna have, you know, very high average household cost contributions for CPA. And
Thank you, Stuart.
So those folks hopefully are taking advantage of that. And by the way, there are a lot of CPCs who will get out and promote that. Um, you know, the assessors do have the forms available at their office and there's probably a sign there, but they usually after they've had CPA for a while, don't promote it. Um, if your CPC is interested, we have an article on our technical assistance page of our website about things you can do to promote the exemptions. And we have a whole bunch of different flyers that communities use. Um, sometimes they're put together by the CPC, sometimes by the assessors, and you guys can um you know, distribute those at the Council on Aging and other places around town. You can hold workshops. You can write press releases to let people know about it. Um, the time for that is coming up because um after the after the January tax bills go out, um, there's a window that opens where people have to fill out that application. So if you did want to work on promoting that and make sure more folks take advantage of that, it'd be a great thing to do. There's some researches on our website and the time to do that would be coming up.
Thank you, Stuart. Uh, Trudy, you have a question?
Yeah, I don't have my raise hand feature. Maybe it's because, I don't know. Um, is that, did Stuart, did you say that's something that the town would have to adopt? And if that's what you said, is that through town meetings?
Yes. Um, I don't wanna, I don't wanna flip off my screen because then I'll ruin the uh presentation. Um.
Can we get back to that, uh, Trudy? Why don't we check that out internally?
I can look it up for you in our database.
Yep, I just want to make sure that that's that would be the process.
Yes. Yeah, you have. It it's actually more than that, uh, Trudy. It's both um on meeting and um about questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Most, most folks do it when they adopt CPA initially. But we have had folks change their exemptions along the way. Probably been a dozen communities to do that um that have changed their exemptions along the way. And I'm just looking it up. I used my phone instead of putting it up on the computer so it wouldn't ruin the PowerPoint. You folks um do have the low- and moderate-income exemption uh following. So there are people taking advantage of it right now. Um, assessors are definitely, I haven't seen any community where no one takes advantage of it. There are definitely some people that are applying for that every year. Um, and your assessors would know more about it. Um, but yeah, you 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 were, you were smart. You adopted that when you adopted CPA in in 2005. And um, that is now a- available to folks. So uh by the way, do you know what percentage your yes vote was on CPA? Just, I couldn't help myself, but look at that. Back in 2005, you had one of the highest yes percentage votes of any community ever in the history of CPA. 77% yes uh and 23% no.
Was, it was a little self-serving, as I understand it, because it was the way we were gonna finance the town hall rehabilitation.
Well, there you go.
Um, there was a specific need, if I'm not, if I'm not incorrect, if I am correct.
That is the best way to adopt CPA is when you have a, you know, a signature project and people can really understand where that money's gonna go. Um, so um, yeah, that's terrific. There's been a couple of the low 80s. Um, Lakeville was one of the highest recently, but that is one of the highest, probably the top 10, um, you know, in the history of CPA. Um, the third funding source um after the state trust fund is is the fact that your your money does earn interest. Um, the CPA money that the town has that you're not using right now is not, probably not sitting in a CPA bank account. It's probably commingled with all the other towns, free cash and stabilization fund. But the town is required to track how much interest is attributable to your funds that are just sitting there, not spent right now. And they are required to pay that into the CPA fund. So you want to make sure that's happening every year. Um, I have found a few communities who didn't realize that and once, you know, once a fiscal year closes, there's really no way to get that money back. So you want to make sure that you are receiving interest payments into your fund. Uh, there is a state form that your accounting department has to submit every year. It's called the CP2. It's due in six days. Um, I'm guessing your town has probably already filed it. Uh, most towns do it over the summer. It's part of the closing of the books of the town. Um, but.
Stuart, I'm sorry. Can you, can you repeat what that, what that form is? I missed it.
Called this.
It's called.
CP2, CP2.
CP2, P dash two. It's, it's a great form, and I'm always stunned at how few CPCs have ever seen it because it's done by the accounting department. They upload it electronically to DOR and they forget about giving a copy to the CPC. Um, but it's your profit and loss statement. It shows, based on the the form they're filling out now would be FY23, um, how much money you earned from all your revenue sources in in FY23, how much interest you earned, um, how much you spent on administrative, how much you spent on projects, and then what are the account balances as of June 30th, 2023, for all the different CPA accounts, your reserve accounts, your fund balance, that sort of thing. It's a great piece of information. It's very simple. It's a two-page form. Um, and it also certifies that you met the 10% requirement, which we're gonna talk about in a minute. Um, so I would definitely make sure to get on the distribution list and make sure your municipal officials are giving you a copy of your CP2 and take a peek at it at your next meeting, maybe. Has anyone ever seen it? Yeah, I, I almost always get the same answer from CPCs when I ask them about it.
No, one of, one of Ms. Davis's last tasks was to have our books balanced and uh they were pretty out of whack, as you're maybe aware. So uh I I'll follow up on this to make sure we get it and it has been being filed.
So Stuart, Stuart, did you say that's due in the next six days? Is that what you said?
Yeah, towns have um four months to close their books on a fiscal year. So the the fiscal year ends on June 30th and they have until October 31st to close their books. Most towns are done by the end of August. So I'm guessing the CP2 form has long been since been filed with with DOR. But technically.
Stuart, we're talking about Wenham, who cannot keep anybody in our finance office. You know, you and I have talked about this.
Right. But you know what?
We need to look at it, Rick. This is an important piece.
That's no problem. It's not a problem. We'll take care of it. Let's keep going, Stuart. I don't want to, I don't want to rail you or derail you.
No problem. Janet, you're not alone. Most communities, I'm finding, are having terrible time keeping finance and accounting people. It's 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 unbelievable. I mean, how many communities um we get a call and someone's brand-new and is asking questions. It's, it's a tough area right now, unfortunately. I don't know why. I guess every area is tough to find people, right? So let's dig into the trust fund a little bit. Um, because that is the magic of CPA. I don't think anyone would have ever adopted CPA were it not, you know, for this wonderful funding source we have. And by and large, the the money for the trust fund does not come from the state. And by and large, the, the money for the trust fund does not come from the state's budget. There are two funding sources, but the green one is the one that's in the CPA statute and that is when they created CPA. They created a new surcharge on every document filed at every registry of deeds across Massachusetts. So if you for the past twenty three years have been filing a document at a registry, our registry is what, in Salem, I think. And you step to the window and you have a deed to record or a mortgage or orders of condition or a map of your property or a refinancing paperwork. Typically, a lot of these filings are done for you by the, by the closing attorneys. But there's a fee that you pay to the state for every single document, it's not inexpensive, I think a deed is two hundred and twenty five dollars to record. Fifty dollars of that fee for every document comes right off the top and goes directly to CPA trust fund, and it is a true trust fund at the Department of Revenue. One, one document is twenty five dollars, municipal lien certificates for some reason are only twenty five dollars, but every other document is fifty dollars. When CPA was first passed, it was twenty dollars and ten dollars were the two fees. We went twenty years without getting any cost of living adjustment on that. And we worked for a really long time to try to get the legislature to raise that from two thousand seven till two thousand nineteen. And finally, in two thousand nineteen, we were able to get the legislature to agree to raise that from twenty five dollars to fifty dollars for most documents. And that made a huge difference in our, in our matching funds. We had already lost almost half of what we were getting to just to inflation between two thousand and two thousand nineteen. While we were in that period where we were trying to convince the legislature to raise that fee. We still weren't successful, but they did, you know, show us that they really enjoy CPA and they, and every legislator has a CPA community in their district. And so they started giving us money from the state budget surplus, believe it or not, the state has a budget surplus every year. And eight out of the last eleven years, we've been able to get funding from the state budget surplus. It requires about six months worth of advocacy on, on part of our organization, it's not easy to get that money. And it's not guaranteed like the, the money from the registry of deeds is guaranteed for CPA. But last year we were able to get twenty million dollars and it's added up to about a hundred and eighteen million dollars over the past eleven years, so it's a great funding source. But as we'll see in a minute, probably not this year for us. So, the last year, the matching funds were distributed actually in two different payments for all the CPA communities. So you received your first check on time on November fifteenth, which is your money from the collections at the registry of deeds and Wenham received two hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars. The legislature didn't close their books on time, talk about towns not closing their books on time, the state never closed its books on time, ever, ever, ever. They have that same October thirty first deadline, they never did it. And so unfortunately, by the time they closed their books and determined there was a surplus, the checks had already gone out to CPA communities, so in December they sent a second distribution. And of that twenty million, Wenham received another seventy nine thousand dollars, so a total of three hundred and sixty seven thousand. Which was a thirty eight point five percent match. When we talk about percentage matches with CPA, it's a percentage of what you raise locally. So three hundred and sixty seven thousand was thirty eight point five percent of what you raised in your local surcharge last year. Does that make sense to folks? Can we talk about those percentages? Alright. So unfortunately, as I hinted, the state's having a little bit of a rough, of a rough year. Collections have finally come back down to earth. And costs have gone up dramatically, personnel costs, contract costs for the state, mass health costs. And the latest is the, the migrant shelter costs are, are hundreds of millions of dollars a month right now. So, we had started advocating for extra money from the trust fund back last spring. We actually were successful and the Senate put thirty million dollars for CPA in their budget. But unfortunately, when it got to the conference committee, it did not survive. Conference committee is done in secret, so we don't know exactly why it was tossed out, but it was tossed out. Probably because they didn't think they were gonna have a surplus. And so the trust fund is gonna be based this year unless the miracle happens. Primarily on those collections at the registry of deeds and collections at the registry have fallen by a third this year. Rick, did you have another question?
No, sir, sorry, I missed, missed, missed.
So from a, you know, a base match of high thirties last year, it looks, it's looking more like twenty percent this year. We are not giving up on the surplus money, there's one more supplemental budget the state has to do before they close their books and we are really trying very hard to make sure there's money in CPA in there, but I would not be optimistic this year because of the grim situation with the state's budget. And so it's kind of a perfect storm, right, at the same time the state can't give us any surplus money. The collections for registry fees has fallen dramatic, dramatically at the state house, so we're in for a little bit of a lean year. Alright, so that's the money piece, any questions on that? Alright, I'm gonna roll very quickly through the next section because it is pretty basic, but just for the benefit of the folks we have who are new. You know, what does a CPC do? You are required to have a public hearing every year, which I'm sure you know and do and and you have a CPA plan, I hope, that's required by the law. And you have to update that plan every year. So those two things are, you know, basic requirements of section five of the act. The third part is really ties into the CP two, you know, you should be getting your account balances and spending from the town's accounting department on a regular basis, whatever, you know, forms, the, or whatever reports the accounting department puts out to their department heads, to the DPW director, to the school committee. You should be getting CPA reports, just the same as any other department is getting reports on what your finances are, whether it's monthly, quarterly. Have to, have to ask the town when they submit those reports and you should ask when to be run on CPA for the same schedule. And then the last two things are really the main, you know, the main purpose of a CPC, which is to recommend a budget every year to town meeting and to recommend projects every year to town. Your annual budget, most towns do it at the same time in the spring as the municipal budget, we do have some that do it in the fall, Rockport does their annual CPA budget every year, they feel it's really busy in the spring with the regular town budget, so they move the CPA stuff to the fall. But most do it in the spring. And it requires a recommendation to, sorry, that shouldn't say city council, that should say town meeting. Requires the CPC to vote to recommend the budget. And then town meeting approves it. And your total revenue, your total budget comes from those funding sources we talked about, the local surcharge revenue and your anticipated trust fund distribution that you anticipate receiving on November fifteenth. Luckily CPA does not put a lot of requirements on what you do with your money, they really consider CPA to be a local program. Even that state money is deposited into your local account, it's not tracked separately as state money. They consider it local money as soon as it hits your account, so the only requirement the state puts on CPA spending is that every fiscal year from your new revenue you expect to receive that year, you have to spend or reserve for later spending, ten percent of your total revenue in each of the three categories, ten percent for housing. The housing reserve account, ten percent for open space and recreation and ten percent for historic preservation. When we say open space and recreation, open space means conservation land, recreation means more active parks, playgrounds, athletic fields, trails, that sort of thing. Those two categories share a reserve account, they don't have their own reserve account. And then the rest of the money is completely flexible, you could put it all into one category, you can save it for the next year and not spend any of it. You can divvy it up, as projects come in, it's completely flexible or what we like to call undesigned. And then you can also set aside five percent of your total revenue for an administrative fund.
Can you explain that Stuart, it's optional, can you explain that one?
The administrative fund?
Please.
Yes, do I, did I, yeah, here it is, actually, good, good timing, Janet, so.
We're gonna be discussing this later tonight Stuart, in our, in our meeting after your presentation. We're gonna be looking at different job descriptions and how other towns use it as they go along, asking the town administrator to find out what other towns our size with our budget are paying for administrative services.
Oh, excellent, alright, well, this is perfect then. So the way the law is written Janet, when you total up your total revenue for the year between your local money and your state money, let's say you expect to receive a million dollars. Five percent of that, you can request town meeting to appropriate that money to you as the CPC administrative account.
Wait, I'm sorry, can, so we can request the town to give us that money?
You have to, well, you, you guys can't appropriate any money yourselves, you can just make recommendations to town meeting. So when you make your annual budget in the spring, you know, where you tell the, the town that you wanna put ten percent in each of the three reserve accounts and you wanna do a bunch of projects, you tell them we wanna set aside this amount of money in our administrative fund. Votes to authorize that. Isn't, is it, it is an account that is there for one year, so the administrative fund is only active for the fiscal year. You don't lose the money at the end of the fiscal year, but anything that's unspent in the administrative fund goes back into your undesigned general fund. You don't lose the money out of CPA, there's never any mixing of CPA money and general fund money with the town's general fund. But the administrative account is only active for one year, the fiscal year, and then town meeting authorizes a new administrative fund for the next fiscal year. It is your administrative fund, it is not a fund for the administration of the CPA program in Wenham. It's for the expenses, the statutory expenses of running your committee. So the town can't use your administrative fund. The town can't have staff charge your administrative fund. The town can't charge, you know, over project, overages on projects to your administrative fund. Only you folks can spend your administrative fund and it has to be for things that are your responsibility and your budget, yes, Rick?
So this can't fund another position in town, so let's say there is a position in town and it is split to support multiple teams. I don't know how to say this. This job description has to be for a position.
A new person.
A new person, so we have, right now, we're getting support from the assistant town administrator.
Which is great, but they're doing that on their own, I mean, the assistant town.
That's not, that's not what they think right now, so we're trying to get all this straightened out. So historically has been, it goes into a pot, the town receives it and they allocate some resources from somebody to do our administrative work.
And you're saying, when, when they take a town staff member, someone who's a full-time staff member and they're doing work for your CPC, whether it's minutes or applications or something like that. You're saying they're charging your administrative budget?
Well, they collect that administrative fee every year, it's a small fee right now, I guess it's very minor, I don't have the exact number, I'm trying to find it.
Maybe Stuart could stick around for the next agenda item, since that's gonna be a major part of the, the conversation on the next agenda item.
Well, I, I'm not gonna be talking, I don't wanna be talking about money in the next agenda item, I wanna be talking about what we need this person to do. So Stuart can help with that, that's great, but the conversation tonight, I'm gonna guide it, is not gonna be about money. Because we don't have all the numbers to talk about it fully, but.
Rick, we don't, we don't need to think, talk about the numbers, we need to talk about the, Stuart knows this, Stuart and Trudy and I met with Stuart a year ago, no, let me just finish my sentence.
I'm letting you, go ahead.
If, if in fact he's saying, it would have to be a new person, whatever, what we have been paying is, this is vague. Nobody can give us why we are giving this money, they can't give us the criteria for that, and that's an issue. Because we've talked about it, he and I and other members of the committee have talked about it in the last two years with Stuart, so it's a problem that we need to deal with.
And that's what I'm trying to deal with, right? But we can't just jump into it without getting what we need and what we want as an organization before we figure it out, so I'm just trying to as a new person to the board, only since Harriet's leaving. I'm just trying to make sure we're, we're doing it in a very organized, very orderly way. And yes, Stuart, this person right now, we get some administrative support and how they view it is that we give them some money and they give us some support, and I'm saying that's not formal enough for me, and you're confirming that that is not the way it should have been done. We're just growing up.
Yeah, if that person who, who was the, the person that was providing administrative support in the past, what was their job in town?
Don't know. Could have been the secretary to the town administrator, it could have been, oh, what was her name that did some work with land use? I think we just kinda got bumped around. Because there was no job description.
And there was, it's fine that, you know, many towns do provide staff support. But they can't charge the CPA administrative budget for that, that person is in the general fund budget. There can never can be any mixing between CPA funds and the general fund, that's called that's the last line of section six, that is the most basic of CPA prohibitions. No CPA money can ever flow back into the town's general budget or supplant money that was in the general. So that person.
Always new, it's always new and.
What's that?
It's always new and more people, it's always new stuff, it's not I understand, so let's not get hung up on this Stuart, I, I don't wanna side rail your but this is gonna be a long-term conversation we're having with town, I'm meeting with the town administrator on Thursday, this is one of my topics for him. So this is timely, timely, but I don't want your presentation to be side-rail by this.
I, I don't think we wanna do that either, Rick, but I'd like you to go to your meeting with our town administrator getting as much information as you can about where we should be according to the regs for CPC, that's all.
I will and I'm learning a lot right now, thank you.
This is a pain point for a lot of CPCs, and so that's why I put this slide in, I didn't know you were actually working on this or talking about how you were gonna handle this in the future, I always put this slide in because it is a pain point for a lot of communities. Is how you get some staff support. But the only way you can do it is if you folks first, you authorize it, right, you set an, an amount. You probably have to work with the town's personnel board because they have categories and specifics on hiring people, et cetera. But you finally approve that in the budget for it and you take it out of your administrative fund and that person has to be someone new. You can't be paying people who are already on the payroll to do your work for you, that's the plan.
It's, it's no defense Stuart, but this has been run like a small country club for three hundred years and we're just trying to make these things more formal and fall in line with what are commonly accepted practices around the state.
Yep, so there you go. The, the only, the only place that there's room to, to do this is if there is a person who was a part-time employee and you are adding to their app. That would be fine, and that's what we did in our town, we had a thirty-two hour a week of conservation agent back when I was chair of my CPC and he really wanted to work full-time, he was gonna go get another job because he wanted a forty-hour a week job. And the conservation department didn't have a budget for forty-two hours, forty hours. And we were looking for some help at the time, so we went to the conscom and said, hey, you know, if, if we can buy eight hours of his time, the la, you know, on top of the thirty-two that he's in the budget for. He'll do work eight hours for us and thirty-two hours for you, and that worked out beautifully and it's still the same person twenty years later, Ross is still the CPA administrator. And he's still the conservation agent. And it's the same eight hours that are charged to the CPC administrator fund. But that's because that was a new thing, so if you do have someone part-time who's good and the town's willing to have that person take on some CPA responsibilities, that you could pay for out of the administrative fund, over and above. But if they're in the budget for forty hours, you cannot pay any of their time. They cannot charge any of their time to the CPA administrative fund, no matter what they do for the CPC.
And unfortunately, that has been the case, that was the case last year, we brought it up to, when Harriet was the chair. It was brought up to the town administrator and they argued that it was okay for them to do that, but then we can move on because we're not gonna do that anymore, obviously Stuart, since you're telling us that that's not what we should be doing.
Right. Alright, so the other things they've.
Trudy does have a question, Trudy does have a question, sorry.
Yeah, just, just for confirmation, Stuart, if somebody, if a staff member supports us after their forty hours above and beyond, like in the evening, could we then give them a stipend?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question, folks ask that a lot, you know, can, can we do something above? You know, I think you also have overtime issues and possibly union contract issues, so you know, if you have to pay them overtime, do you really wanna be paying someone time and a half when you can tire someone for a straight time, you know, without doing that? I think it's dangerous to start doing that because things get mixed up on the books, you know, it's much cleaner if you have a, a name of an employee that's been hired to do CPA work part-time. You know, or an independent contractor, a lot of CPCs use independent contractors because there's just not enough work usually for a you know, you folks probably need maybe five to ten hours a week, you know, I can't. you know, you folks probably need maybe five to ten hours a week. You know, I can't imagine much more. Maybe I'm wrong, but I know that's what it is in in Boxer. We're about the same size. We're a little bigger, maybe.
Okay, so somebody like a minutes taker could have pay.
Oh, yeah, that's 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 easy because that's just an hourly, that's just an hourly thing, right?
Okay, I'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
It'd be nice, it'd be nice for Trudy not to have. So, you know, a lot of towns have people, that's all they do. And then they just, they're not full-time employees on the town, just you know, they're independent contractors and whatever work they can get, the minutes, they do work and that's fine. You could do that. But if they're in the, you know, they're in the town's time.
Okay, we have to leave off, Stuart. We have a background noise. If we can mute yourself if you're not speaking, please.
Sorry, everybody.
All right, um so you know, these are some of the other things you can use it for, you know, as you get ready for town meeting, if you need a consultant to help you uh look through a historic preservation um proposal, or if you need an appraisal on a piece of open space, those are all things that you can spend. But every time you spend money out of the administrative fund, it's a vote of your committee at one of your meetings. That's the only way the administrative fund can be accessed. Those public hearings, they require a couple ads in the newspaper, you know, those to be charged to your CPA um administrative budget. It is not for project expenses. So if people forget, you know, forgot to put something in their application or a project runs over on costs, you cannot supplement that with administrative fund. The administrative fund and the project funds are completely separate. All right, so that's the the money piece. Um I'm going to skip this piece because we are running a little bit late. And talk about um eligibility for funds. Rick, tell me, tell me how much time we have on your agenda, so I'll pace myself here.
We are a little long, Stuart, but can we give another fifteen minutes? How does the team feel about that? If you're really on a post another fifteen minutes or so? Great, let's keep going.
Okay, all right. So we'll wrap up by by um seven forty-five.
If we can make it in that, Stuart, yes.
Yeah, we can, we can. So in terms of eligibility for CPA funds, the the law actually surprisingly says nothing about who's eligible for CPA funds. But some best practices have emerged over time. Um the two biggest um applicants for CPA funds are the town itself, you know, different departments that apply for funding. Um and nonprofits in town that do community work or have buildings that are uh open to the public. These other categories down below um are not prohibited in any way, shape or form. But they're kind of complicated. And so we just urge caution and make sure you really know what you're doing because the degree of difficulty for giving CPA funds to anyone but a nonprofit or uh the town itself is is quite difficult. So for one, one area that you really want to urge caution is non-incorporated entities. So we see these in cities a lot. They have a um a neighborhood association or the Friends of Prescott Park, and they're just a loose association of folks who are not incorporated. Almost impossible to give those folks any funding, uh because there's no entity to receive the money from the town. Sometimes people who own historic homes want to apply to CPA funds. You uh definitely don't want to, you know, handle one-off applications from historic homes in town and be debating Mrs. Johnson's um facade improvement project on town meeting floor. Um that's not for the for the faint of heart. We do have a couple of very large cities that have programs for people with historic homes for uh facade improvements in historic districts, um Springfield and Cambridge, but they have professional full-time staff that administer that program. I have not seen any any small communities take that uh type of program on because it's very difficult. Um and then, of course, um any privately owned historic building, whether it's a commercial building or religious institution. Um we have had one community sued um over giving money to religious institutions, Acton. Um there's a ton of information on our website. Unfortunately, it's still an evolving area that the the SJC decision in that case wasn't really super clear, to be honest. So that's a tricky one that communities are dealing with. Um we are seeing a few more communities do commercial historic uh facade improvement projects on commercial buildings that are in historic districts that are very prominent buildings. Lowell is doing a little of that work. Um but again, it's a difficult area that you want to make sure you really know what you're doing. All right, so um this is the most famous piece paper in the world of CPA. It's called the CPA allowable uses chart, and this is really where the rubber meets the road on what you can do with CPA funds. The allowable uses section of CPA is in section five V two, and it's a section only the lawyers could love. It's a long legalese paragraph. And frankly, those of us who were working on CPA in the Wild West early two thousands, um we didn't really quite understand what we could do with this funding. Uh because that paragraph is very difficult. But then DOR put this chart out in about two thousand five and all of a sudden it was like a light bulb went off in our head, you know, a picture is worth a thousand words, right? So this really made it a lot easier. It's not easy. It made it easier. Allowable uses still aren't easy, though. Um it's probably what we spend eighty percent of our technical assistance time working on is allowable uses. Um so how do you use this chart? Well, um the categories across the top in green, that's one thing that we all know, right? We all know CPA is a restricted fund. It has to be something in one of these four categories in order to be able to fund it. But what's very clear is that CPA cannot fund everything related to these four categories. You have these verbs down the left-hand side. And those verbs, when they intersect with the category, create these boxes. And you have to be able to justify a CPA project, not only by the category, but it has to be one of those verbs. So if you are in the open space category, which means conservation land, you have to be acquiring, meaning buying that land. You have to be creating conservation land, which is very hard to do. Taking down a a building and then, you know, putting it under control, the conscom for conservation land would be about the only way you could create conservation land. So that box is not used very much. And the only other thing you can do in the conservation category is to preserve conservation land, protect it from injury, harm or destruction. Uh also not a very popular box, but maybe invasive species, you know, work might qualify for something like that. So every CPA project application that comes in, hopefully you're getting a budget with those applications. You have to have a budget. And it has to be pretty detailed. It's not going to be exact because at that point the project hasn't been bid and people are just taking um you know, educated guesses on the budget, but you need a budget to look at. And the reason you need it is you need to look at every line item in the budget and find a box on that chart where that expense can go. And if you can't find a box that says yes on that chart, that describes that expense, it is not eligible for funding. So let's give you a couple of examples. Let's say you get an application to do an oral history of World War Two veterans in Wenham. There's only sixteen World War Two veterans left. I'm making this all up, by the way. And um a group wants to get their stories, hire a professional videographer, capture their stories before they pass on. And really tell the history of um the service in World War Two by Wenham residents. And it's going to be at the library and it's going to be on cable TV, um and it's going to be used in a third grade curriculum. All right. So you're creating a video oral history project of of World War Two veterans. So it's obviously in the historic category. Are you acquiring a historic resource? And a historic resource has a definition. By the way, all these words on the top and sides have definitions in CPA. It's in section two. Um I would suggest you read that section of the act. It's probably the most valuable section of the entire law, section two, the definitions. And the definition of a historic resource is a building, structure, vessel, real property, document or artifact. So when you're doing that oral history project, are you acquiring a building, structure, vessel, real property, document or artifact? Are you buying one of those things for the town? You are not. Are you preserving one of those things? Are you doing physical work to preserve a historic building, structure, vessel, real property, document or artifact? By vessel, by the way, it's boats, not flowerpots. You are not preserving one of those six things. And you are also not rehabilitating a building, structure, vessel, real property, document or artifact. That project is not eligible for CPA funding. In fact, the best verb that describes that project is either support. You're supporting the historic category. Certainly, this oral history video is going to support the historic category. And you're also creating something brand new, a videotape uh program. Uh and you can see those two clearly say no um on the CPA allowable uses chart. So that's how you use um the chart. It's very important to look at the budget and find what the project is, not just the description of what the project's going to do, but what the money's going to be spent on. And make sure that the box that says yes, that describes that activity that you're going to be spending money. Any questions on the allowable uses chart? All right, um I'm going to skip, Rick, the next four slides. It's another example of how we step through the allowable uses chart to determine whether a project is eligible, but I kind of did it for you there. In the interest of time, we won't do a second example. Um but step four, I I like to talk about because if you get to the end of the process to determine whether something is eligible, meaning legal, to fund, that does not mean you have to fund it. Um and this is a common misconception among mostly among new CPA communities. But they think that the CPC's job is just to determine if something's legal, and if it is, they send it on to town meeting. That could not be further from the truth. Um the point at which you determine it's eligible is when your due diligence starts. That's when the CPC kicks in. That's when the reason for being of your committee kicks in. And you want to look at a lot of different things before you fund it. Um does it fit and match what the priorities are in your CPA plan? How does it compare to the other things that are competing for the same money that cycle, right? Once a year, you have applications. You know, most CPA communities get more applications than they have money, so they got to prioritize. Um a lot of times you get applications that are not ready for prime time, you know? You can tell those applications a mile away. There's no budget, they're submitted at the last minute, they've got like grandiose descriptions and ideas and there's nothing in the application in terms of actual facts, details and thought. You know, we would very much caution communities to not get ahead of the process and um approve projects unless they truly are well-thought-out with all the details answered and the questions answered. And a lot of times CPCs don't want to be the full funding source as well. You know, it's a little easier to get CPA money than other funding sources. So sometimes people don't try the hard things. But you know, the bake sales are important. Um the other state grant programs, there are, you know, hundreds of state grant programs. And they're important and folks didn't just come to CPA if there are other possible avenues to to fund projects. All right, um housing is a category which you have struggled in.
Excuse me, Stuart, I just want to uh amplify that last point last, I'm sorry, I didn't unmute myself fast enough. We're in the process of working on a master plan, as many of people here know. So one goal that we need to consider is to aligning ourselves with what the master plan, which then gets released, is decided because that really is the well-up. We can all look at what projects are good and how they fit in, but that's a much more in-depth uh analysis of where the town's going. And I think we need to be in line with those requirements as well when we decide what projects go forward.
It does say that when it describes in the law, um we have a whole article on our website about CPA plans, which you can, which you can read, but it does say one of the things that the CPC is responsible for doing when they create their plan is to look at all the other town plans and make sure you're in alignment with the open space plan, the housing plan, the master plan, if those, if those documents exist, exist.
Thank you.
CPA is getting a little bit of slack right now from the general housing community. Uh we just have too many communities that are unfortunately um mostly suburban communities like mine and yours, um who may not be um doing what they should be doing in housing in general. And that um sort of um uh discourse is spilling over into the CPA world as well. And it wouldn't surprise me if we see some, you know, people proposing legislation to change the way CPA works um to encourage uh more housing. Um we feel very strongly that CPA is a local program and communities should be able to determine their own priorities. And if something else is a bigger priority uh at that point, um so be it. Uh but not everyone feels that way. Um you know, housing is a huge problem right now. And so you know, is one of these situations where if we don't, um you know, as a as a whole, give proper due diligence and and funding to housing, I think we are possibly heading for some static um at the legislature and some fights um on folks wanting to um push requirements, either a a stick approach rather than a carrot approach, so to speak. So just something to be aware of and and focus on. So in the, in the housing world, um you know, there's a, it's it's actually the category that has the most amount of allowable uses. You can acquire, create or preserve um housing units. Housing can go up to a hundred percent of the area-wide median income. The states, um most of the state's affordable housing program only allow up to eighty percent. But CPA allows a little higher. It's the only verb, uh the only category that has the verb support that's eligible on that chart. You saw housing was the only one where you can have broad things um that support the category. The others aren't allowed. The one thing I will point out, item number three here, is that CPA is for new housing opportunities. You can't fix up, for the most part, it gets a little complicated, but for the most part, you can't rehabilitate or restore existing affordable housing units, meaning your housing authority units. There are very limited things you can do. We can get into that if you have some of those projects being proposed to you. But by and large, CPA is for creating new housing opportunities, not fixing up existing affordable housing. Um and I think this may be the last slide, Rick. We're right at the very end here. Um I always like to touch on a couple of things for outdoor recreation. CPA outdoor recreation activities is mostly capital work. Um CPA can never be used for maintenance or operating expenses. That's a broad prohibition in all categories. Oh, Patricia, you had your hand up. Sorry, I didn't notice.
Oh, it's okay. Just a quick clarification on what you were saying for new housing. I mean, sometimes existing housing sort of me, you know, goes back on the market and there might be like a new developer that takes it on and it's sort of preserving it as affordable. Is that uh considered new or is that still considered kind of not? Not a new building, right?
You're talking about what's called expiring uses, where there was a on there and the deed restriction was for thirty years and it's about to expire and the developer is now going to put that on the market as a market rate unit. Yes, that is absolutely a CPA project. That's called, that's, that's called expiring uses. And basically that deed restriction is going to be expired. So now it's going to be a market rate unit and if CPA can get that what's it called, buying that down back to a market rate unit, you have created a new unit uh because you were going to lose it. So that's a great use of CPA money. Um and we have a whole article on our website, by the way. Google um in the search box on our website, Rolling Ridge Amherst. They used one point two five million dollars to rebuy down restrictions. You know, just months before a lot of people were going to be put out on the street from their apartments because the entire building was e- expiring from their thirty-year deed restrictions and CPA came to the rescue there. So that's a great use. Do you have a property like that, Patricia? You think that's coming up in in Wenham?
No, not yet. Not that I know of. I just know it exists and was curious about the dis- the restriction.
Yeah, because you have. Couple of things, uh we are, um there, money is being spent uh through the CPC but not directly to a project uh to do that to one of, to a uh expiring uh house uh in town and we're going to turn it from a uh a a sale from a private residence into a rental because rental here are more more needed than um than 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 uh than anything else. And just just to let you know, Stuart, we're at about thirteen percent of our uh affordable housing, capital A, affordable housing requirement.
Good.
So, yeah, so we have a little stress off on that, but we're always looking for more opportunities.
Yeah, absolutely. Um so a few other restrictions in the, in the, probably the outdoor recreation has the most restrictions on it. It says on the law that you can't use any kind of stadiums like the high school football stadium. CPA is for outdoor recreational facilities only. Um there was a lawsuit on sidewalks. Um and the town of Norwell lost that lawsuit, so CPA funds cannot be spent on sidewalks unless they're inside of a park. That's fine. And there was also another lawsuit on artificial turf. And CPA funds cannot be used to acquire the actual turf um surfaces on a field. So there we go, seven forty-five and twenty seconds or so, Rick. We're happy to answer any other questions we didn't get to tonight. Um I can stay for a couple more minutes if you have people have other questions, but you can also contact us anytime. I can stay for a couple more minutes if people have other questions, but you can also contact us anytime. We are really happy to help and really excited about the new energy on your committee, and we wish you a lot of luck.
To Stuart.
Anybody?
Thank you. That was great.
Hearing none. I, I think we all want to thank you.
All right.
Much for coming tonight, Stuart. Thank you so much.
All right, and I don't know if I have Bonnie's email, Rick. Maybe you could send that to me.
I will, and I'm going to make another announcement that we now have a full board. At the select board meeting tonight, Catherine Harrison was appointed as an at-large member to the CPC and she was sworn in by the town clerk shortly thereafter. I invited her to the meeting, but she couldn't make it. So I'll get you both contact info, Stuart.
Yeah, great. And I'll send this presentation to you tomorrow morning to everybody. But if you could forward it to those people, two people, Rick, if, if we don't have that would be great. All right, folks, let me stop sharing my screen here. Give you back control of your meeting. And thanks so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wow, great, huh? Yeah, and I, I've been to the website a lot lately and you'll find that if you want to get educated, it's great. It's really easy. It's well laid out and structured and you can find things pretty quickly. Great. Any more conversation on that topic before we move on? I still see Stuart here. I don't know why.
Yeah, he can hang out a few ones.
Yeah, nothing bad to say. You should have in your packets. Moving on to discussion around the roles and responsibility, yes?
I'm, I'm sorry. I did not get a packet. The last email that I saw was from Janet saying that it was not included. Did you send it out again?
Did everyone get one but you, Trudy? I'll send it out right now. Hold on.
I got one on the 20th on Friday.
I got one, but actually I just looked when Trudy just said that. It looks like you sent it to her email from back 100 years ago when she was the town clerk. And she gave up that job, unfortunately for all of us. I can forward it to you, Trudy.
Do you mind doing that while I?
No, no problem. I'd be happy. Okay, now, okay, the mystery's been solved, but
Mystery solved. It was just an old email address.
Wrong email address. Thank you.
So we did, we did find out from Stuart tonight, some interesting information that it actually has to be a person assigned to the CPC, not going into a general fund where then they absorb that based on what services they're providing to the CPC. So that's a big realignment I need to work with politically in the town. So that's a dual track, right? The other track is what do we need for service?
Can we just stop at the first track? Because he said a person, but he didn't say a person. He said a new person. It cannot be somebody who's already employed by the town.
No, it can be. It can be somebody who doesn't have a full-time job at the town.
Okay, I'm sorry. I will back that up. It cannot be a full-time person.
Correct.
It can be someone who is part-time that works for the town. And then we could add in some of their time to make them full-time or not make them full-time. Just give them more hours.
Contractor or can be an independent contractor on a 1099. Yes.
Okay, my, I guess maybe I'm not saying this clearly. He said clearly that it cannot be someone who is already full-time, cannot be paid out of any of our monies, basically.
Correct. He did say that.
Okay. But in the past, that is what's happened, so we need to fix that. Rick, I'm sorry, for way of background, can you just give us a brief discussion update of, of what's been going on in the background as far as you and the town administrator and/or what's being discussed? Because I feel like we're a little vague on this subject.
Because nothing's really happened yet.
Okay, all right.
Telling you up to what I know, which is Thursday with Joe and with, with Steve. And one of the topics is this administrative support. Steve approached me saying that there would be, he wants to increase the amount of funding that comes out of CPC to support us administratively, and I wrote back, then we need a job description, right? I said, I'm totally open to doing that. I got to talk it with the team, but I think that's totally a great idea. Let's pay our fair share. No problem. Let's discuss it. The first kickoff meeting really is one of the topics for the Thursday meeting.
Okay, I, I have a problem with, maybe I'm just hearing this wrong. I'm sorry if I am. So he would like to increase the funding. But what we just heard from Stuart is, and we know that in the past, we have paid money to the town and wherever they've used it has not been for a new person. So needing a job description. No, we don't need a job description. We need to know who is the new person that's going to do something for us and what is it they're going to do.
We're not there yet. We're not even there yet. That discussion, that discussion hasn't even happened yet. Nothing's happened. We're just going to talk about the idea and the framework. I'm just trying to get us engaged. Now that we know Stuart is definitely clear on this issue, that it has to be a body. They have to be assigned to us. They have to have a job description. They get paid by us. However, they submit their request for payment. It may be an hourly thing. It may be a 1099, however, but it has to be a position allocated. Once we get that communicated, which has not been communicated yet, we can then discuss the next steps. So this is a process thing. I, I'm not going in like a bull in a china shop trying to do anything. I'm just trying to make sure we're all communicating and we're going together. And we need to know what we need that person to do, that position to do. And then we decide, oh, how much is it going to be? Well, I don't know. Is that acceptable to the team? No, it's not acceptable. Then we go back and renegotiate what the job will be. Oh, that's acceptable. Okay, we agree. Let's do it.
Let's discuss as a board what we would see that this person doing for us.
That's what's in the packet. So there are three example job descriptions, one of a town about our size and one, a two from much larger towns. That's all I could find online on the CPA Coalition website. So you want to read them through for a minute if you haven't already? I got to review them myself.
Rick, can you just give a quick rundown of the, of the town? Because I don't have mine open. Just, just quickly. The small town, just quickly, just go over some of the responsibilities.
Okay, here's Stowe, Stowe, Massachusetts. CPA Administrator, five to 15 hours a week, variable depending on workload, including evening meetings. Provide, that's, I got to get more light. Provide substantive support with regard to carrying out projects for funding as assigned. Overseal consultants and other experts providing services to the CPC. Track project progress. Become familiar with the Department of Revenue Guidelines on the Community Preservation Act. Prepare and manage the administrative budget for the committee. Track the funding. Maintain the status of open space historic and community housing funds. Provide a record of all committee recommendations, expenditures, and property interests. Assist in the preparation and issuance of annual reports. Review published and internet newsletters concerning the CPC and housing issues such as low and moderate income housing. Assist in obtaining grants from open space historic preservation and affordable housing. Outreach and training. Assist in orienting and training new CPC members. Interface with the public concerning CPA activities. Serve as liaison to the Massachusetts Community Preservation Coalition. Assist with annual review of CPA plans for Stowe. Become familiar with the Community Preservation Act, MGL Chapter 44B. Post meetings and agendas of the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you.
Fifteen to, five to 15 hours a week. So if you put like 20 bucks on that, an hour, 30 bucks an hour, you know, you're seeing the, the cost to the, to the, to the town of Stowe. Okay, did that help? Everybody going to get pulled in? Great. Ideas?
So let me ask a question because I don't, this came out of Stuart and I don't know if anyone's currently doing it. Do we have a CPC plan and is it updated every year and who updates it?
No idea. I looked for it. It looks old. Doesn't look like it's been updated. I can't find if it's been submitted regularly. I'm working on that too. It's part of our administrative cleanup year. It's just all coming at us.
And I'm going to take a guess. You had nothing to do with this CP2, whatever form he named off?
Never seen it. Kind of asked to see if, if Joe might know whether that's been submitted or not at the end of our fiscal year. CP2, Joe?
Yes, I believe that's a reporting form we, you know, submit every year and I, I did that a couple of months ago.
There you go.
Okay, but it should have been shared with Rick or the committee.
Yeah, it should have been. He may have sent it to me. I don't remember. I apologize if I didn't submit it to you guys.
Joe, can you, Charles, did you short with the committee?
So originally, Rick, if correct me if I'm wrong, the email was sent to you, but it was unclear who was filling it out this year. So you sent me the link. You tried to log in, I believe.
That's right. I tried to log in to fill it in because I thought it was my responsibility and said, no, it's a town responsibility. That's, I think, the last where we left it.
Yeah, so I, I don't recall if you've seen the database or not.
No, again, this is stuff we're just trying to clean up because there are so many loose
But you know what? We're all here together. Let's just see what we can figure out right now. So Joe, the form was submitted?
Yes.
Okay, so was it copied to our committee? If not, could you just copy to us?
Yeah, please just send it along to us. Thank you.
Sure.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Other, Trudy, that answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
Other questions, ideas? Anybody want the job?
No, I mean, I do think they feel like you all do a lot of administrative work, whether that's corralling people, setting up the zoo. I mean, they're setting up the meetings, setting up zoom, taking, and taking notes in the job description that was listed. Even just doing that general maintenance seems like it would help. I, I haven't been involved in anything of that sort. So I really lean on those of you that have been a part of it to know what this is actually taking or what you all are taking on and what you're finding, Rick, that we haven't been doing. So that, you know, that does seem helpful.
So I'm just going to add a little bit of history if I can, and so I don't know if Joe has anything to add or correct me. Originally, there was a, a full, a part-time person in town hall several years ago. And I know that she may or may not, I think she was probably paid from out of CPC to help get her some full-time hours. But she did do a lot for CPC. And I'm guessing that she at one point received funds from the CPC to pay for that. We also had a professional minutes taker up until most, until a few months ago. She was also paid out of the CPC administration fees for her time that she put in on the minutes. And they, you can compare the mine to hers and you will see that she was very professional. So those are just two of the things that I believe that we have probably have paid for in the past. So I would think if we're going to try to find somebody to help us with some of this, I think Stowe seems to be a little overachiever. I don't, I don't know if that's the right word. I just think that that's a lot that that person does when maybe some of the town hall staff is currently doing it for us. I don't know. So I don't know if this is something that we need or it would be nice to have if we had a part-time person solely designated to this committee to do some of these jobs for us.
Other thoughts, ideas? Thank you, Trudy. I, I think following up on that, one, one thing that I, I see missing is just a central repository for everything. I'm going to come and go. You're all going to come and go. But I don't know that we have great documentation on the history of CPC. So I think whether this is a pared-down position, 15, I, I think it's probably more of a, a up and down kind of position where in the summer you're not doing very much. You're probably not many hours allocated. But then come January, when all those proposals are coming in and you got to collate them and get them out to people and then we're in busy season. So maybe it is 15 or 20 hours a, a week at that point. So, a, a, and we get further, I'll reach out to Stowe and talk to the town administrator there or the select board, whatever. Find out what they think of it and, and towns like that, but we're just really just starting to talk, talk about it. Well, if I could say then, as I, and on Thursday, when I meet, because that was another discussion point for tonight, we're going to be discussing this and allocating money and how we allocate money. Getting reports on a reasonable basis. Now the CP2, because that came up today to make sure that's finalized. And how do we get this town report? Because I was looking at this town report that other towns put out and I'm like, I don't have time to write this. This was like, if, if you go to the CPC and look for examples of town reports, or go to Acton or Stowe and look at somebody's CPC report, it's nice. It's glossy. It's well-written. It's very
Rick, it's just the CPC portion within an annual report.
No, this is a specific report that has to be filed with the state every year.
Oh, okay.
And it's nice. It's, you probably can brief it into the town report, you know, into the annual report. But I thought, I, I don't have time to, no one here has time to do that kind of work, I don't think.
I don't know. If you pay me enough money, I might find the time.
See, there you go. You got a full-time job. Yes, sir.
Sorry, so the form I filled out was CP3. You said CP2?
I may have misspoke.
I thought he said CP. I have
I have in my notes CP2.
CP2 in my notes.
Okay, I'll have to look into that. The form I'm referring to is the CP3 that's required every year to be filled out.
Well, he also said this form is due within six days, the CP2.
Got it. Okay, I'll look into that.
Well, Joe, you said you've already filed the CP2.
CB3 says
Okay, are we good on that for tonight? Because it really just initially getting it out there.
As far as this topic of administrative person, do you have enough to go to town administrator with?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think we're in agreement we should evaluate. Sorry.
Okay, so I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, what is it we're going, you're going to town administrator with? That we, it would have to be a new person or, which is what I think Stuart said.
Just
I think you, because I think I, you had told me that Steve said he was going to, that he needed to increase the amount of money we were giving.
And that's what triggered me.
Right.
If I'm going to give more money out of this budget from us, we're going to give more money, then I want more details about what that person's doing.
Well, I think we need to back up because
Yes, now Stuart said it has to be a separate position, right?
Because Stuart has now given us a whole different perspective on this, which is the money we've been paying in the past. We should not have been paying because it was being paid to people who were already working full-time.
I don't know enough information about that to make a determination.
I understand that. So I guess maybe that's, that's a mess. Sorry, Rick.
But I'm not going to try to dig up mess in the past. I want to get us on the rails.
Just move forward.
Yes, yes.
Well, we do need to move forward, but we need to move forward with the idea that they cannot say, are you already paid X amount? And you're going to continue to pay that because if we paid X amount and we should not have been paying that, then that needs to change. Because what are we paying for? And if I understood Stuart, that's a vote of this committee of what is paid. So, okay, nothing can be done without us voting on it.
Correct.
So we would have to vote as a committee. Okay, that makes sense.
So a timeframe for this, as I understand it, is budget, right? So this is going to be part of the budget process for next year for the town. They'll see that we're going to take whatever money we think we're going to take out. It'll be a line item. It'll be documented. It won't be some kind of, yeah, that's okay kind of thing. And then they'll, we'll have an expectation of support and what that support is. Not that Joe is doing a great job, not saying that, but just document it better. Okay, did that
Just one thing, a small, small, small point, but in reading through the, the Boxer job description, point number five talks about writing and distributing press releases on CPA projects and following up with the press to arrange interviews. Write distributed memos to town boards. I, I know we've talked in the past about a desire to inform the public about the work that the CPC is doing. And I think that point in the Boxer description is, is one that we may want to think about incorporating going forward and, and whatever we create for our own jobs. I didn't see that in, I didn't see that in the Stowe one, although the, the report that you referenced in Stowe is, is not a good point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Keep that on your radar. That'll be your thing to keep bringing up, John. I, I'll, we'll put it in the notes for the meeting too. Other comments and questions there? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on. This is great. Thank you. You give me feedback. So I feel better talking to Steve and Joe and so, thank you. Thank you. Any updates on projects people have been working on? Trudy?
I just wanted to apologize that I have not gotten very far on the project that I
I just wanted to apologize that I have not gotten very far on the project that I volunteered for several months ago. I really wanna go back through town meeting warrants. They're hard to find on the town's website because they're not labeled appropriately. It's, you've gotta look through books to find the dates. I need to find time to go into the library or into Town Hall and pull those actual reports. So I, it's been in the back of my head. Um, I've not, I've not given up on it. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I, I'm kinda like, we don't apologize for anything. We are all volunteers. We all have real lives. Many of us have kids. We have jobs, careers. Finding things in this town isn't easy some days. So thank you, Trudy, for continuing to work on that.
Trudy, I'm happy to volunteer to help you with that if you'd like. Um, just, you know, lean on me, please.
Was that Bonnie?
Yes.
Please lean on me, Trudy, if you would like help with like going to Town Hall or to get that information.
I would, I'll, I'll talk to you offline. Thank you so much.
Great. Uh, any news on prospective twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four projects? I did receive from Joe, uh, our first woo-hoo application for eligibility. And as I looked at it, it looks like it does pass the litmus test, which is something that this administrative support person would do. But in lieu of that person, I took it on to do that. And it's from the, uh, cemetery commission looking for money to rebuild the wall or repair the wall along Main Street in the Historic District. So the other thing, um, anybody get your, read through it yet? Sorry, it went out late.
When did it go out?
Okay, it went out probably a couple of days ago.
Yeah.
Yesterday.
Hi, did it come from you or I don't remember seeing anything?
You know, I probably sent it to the wrong.
Maybe you're using my Wenham account. Rick, let's get that.
I, I got it, Rick.
Bonnie, do you mind maybe forwarding it to Trudy if you, if you have it on the screen or something? Is it there?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Um, go ahead, John.
No, I, I was just saying I have it too, but go ahead, Bonnie.
So is, I'm sorry, is the period open for this?
Yes, the period is open. It opened on the twenty-fourth after our public meeting or whatever day the public meeting was on.
Oh, okay.
First.
And it closes in November if I'm not correct. I don't have the exact date off the top. I had a should, but I don't.
That's okay. I just.
And so I, I do believe this is appropriate. So I think I communicated back that to Joe, uh, who will, I hope uh, communicate that back to the grantee, um, grantor, grantee. Which is great, but as I was reading all the details through the CPA legislation, because I got way too heavy and deep into it, uh, since it is in the Historic District Commission, I have to research this a little further that I believe it has to be approved by the Historic District Commission before it comes to us for approval. And I don't know when that approval happens. So I'm trying to figure that out. Uh, so Bonnie, maybe we could work on that. Oh, maybe Trudy knows.
Well, just from prior experience, because I had to do this for Wenham and I'm currently in the process of doing it for Wayland. So you have to get on this, this person who's requesting the funds, because they're gonna need a sponsor or they would have to just get their support. Needs to get on to one of their agendas to present the program to the project so that they have their approval or disapproval. I don't know if we as a CPC require a sponsor. But I remember when I was in Wenham and I went for a project for record preservation. I was highly encouraged to get the historic approval for their support.
And I believe they do, that they have a, they have a supporter, which is the Wenham Cemetery Commission, who is sponsoring this request. But as I read the, the CPA legislation, they have to get the approval of the HDC since it falls within their territory.
Is that on our application that they have to write that, that they got the approval or?
No, I don't believe it is. So we're gonna have to work on the final application to make sure that's there. So, yes.
Take a look at Wayland's because I think they have it.
Great. That, that'd be great. That'd be great. Um, as I said, at the beginning of my tenure, this is gonna be a nuts and bolts kind of year and that's why we're meeting regularly and that's why we're taking on this responsibility. Uh, so Bonnie, I will work with you to make sure that we communicate with Mr. Wilson to, uh, tell him to get on the next agenda, to make sure that you guys are okay with it. I don't know how far that slows down the process. So that's my concern, too. I don't know how long the HDC needs to make that approval. Do we put a timeframe and it has to respond within forty-five days, whatever? So we gotta work on that, Bonnie. Okay, great.
I'll work with you on that. Thank you. I'm sure it can't be more than thirty days.
Yeah, we gotta figure statutorily what it is, too. So in case we don't get, okay. Um, I do know somebody's looking to do some work at the Buker School, at what used to be the garden there. Um, they're trying to find somebody like the Garden Club to be their sponsor to work on um, recreating that garden in a more echo education, uh, format. Do we wanna do minutes? Are we up for minutes?
You better do minutes after the work I put into them.
Hey, Rick. Yes, sir.
Um, I wasn't at the meeting, but I read the minutes. It's amazing how much work you put into that, Trudy. Uh, the year should be twenty twenty-three, not twenty twenty. That's all.
What?
Oh.
Which, which minute?
Well, it's part of Rick's package. I think it's page six or something like that.
I sent the minutes out. I didn't know if Rick had, I don't think Rick included them in the packet since I didn't get it.
Yeah, they're.
Oh, they did. They, they, they did get included. Uh, draft.
They're in Rick's eight page. Yeah.
It starts out draft. Meeting started about ten minutes late at six forty-eight, September twenty.
Which, which set of minutes? I gave you three sets.
It's the date that starts September twenty-first.
It doesn't match, it actually doesn't match what Trudy sent in her email, the draft minutes.
Really?
On Saturday. So there's three there that don't seem to be included in the packet.
Okay, so Rick, originally I had sent you one email and I had trouble getting the rest to go through. So I had to have my thirty-year-old son help me, but then I sent a separate email to everybody that had the minutes. So those, and I had asked everyone to review them.
And I was going off a different set. Hold on.
Sorry.
Yeah, we'll get it right.
I'm just gonna make myself a note to check the dates in the September twenty-first. Is that correct?
Why don't we start with those then, since they're open?
They're, they're, um, they're, they're correct. The dates are correct, Trudy.
Oh, thank you. Oh, I do now remember going back to make that change.
Okay.
You don't need me. Keep talking on minutes. You wanna stay on that September twenty-first minutes? Any other changes?
There were no changes.
Yeah, no change. No change to the actual minutes she sent. There's one August sixteenth that looks good, date-wise. One October fourth and one Sep- September twenty-first. I'll have the correct date.
Okay, I guess that should be a little more clear. Does anybody have comments on the minutes from September twenty-first, twenty twenty-three?
I make a motion to approve as submitted.
I second.
Second.
Uh, we gotta do a roll call since we're on Zoom. Hold on, please. I gotta slip back. Uh, Alden?
Yes.
Trudy?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
John? You good, John?
John, you muted.
Okay, Bonnie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Rick, yes. And now on to the minutes of, let's pick eight, eight sixteen twenty-three.
So just an FYI, anybody, everybody who votes has to be people that were available during that meeting or they can't approve the minutes.
That is correct. Let's go back.
I thought I read somewhere where you could, as long as you read the minutes. I don't, no.
Okay.
I read the most recent minutes. Um, yep.
Let me ask this. Bonnie, have you taken your oath?
Yes.
Great.
Okay, let's go back to the sixteenth. Um, Rick, John, Alden, Janet, Pat, Trudy, uh, Leo, not here anyway. Any, uh, suggested changes, typos? Hearing none, I'll take a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And let's go around the room so I can see everybody. Uh, Alden?
Yes.
Trudy?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Bonnie?
I don't know that I have the August sixteenth.
And you can just abstain.
Okay, I'll abstain.
Great. And Rick, yes. Okay, I'm flipping back between screens here. So bear, uh, ten four. Ten four meeting. Any comments, changes? I'll, I'll entertain a motion then for.
I move, we approve the minutes.
Second, please. Okay. And let me go around the room again. Start with John. Alden, one more time?
Yes.
Trudy?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
And Bonnie. Oh, you weren't here. So, yeah, we're good. You can abstain. Yeah, we'll get you next time on these minutes.
So I would like to say that I'm going to make them final. I would remove the word draft and I will submit to Town Hall to get posted to the town's website.
You are awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are caught up. Nice. Um, and then, uh, topic number nine. Any topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair?
Um, just for minute purposes, I put down here about the Catherine Harrison appointment since you just kinda threw that in there.
Yes, could you please just note that, that she was, uh?
And I put it under number nine.
Thank you. She has been sworn in. Uh, so hopefully we'll see her next time. I was also somebody who I believe is good at administrative stuff, so we can dump some stuff on her, too. That's it.
And she's retired.
And she's retired. Great. Anyone wanna entertain a motion, uh, to adjourn? I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Eight seventeen.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All in favor? Alden? Trudy?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Night, everybody.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hey, Joe, you wanna hang? Oh, I lost Joe. Okay.